I'm going to open a hearing for the Joint Committee on Ways and Means Subcommittee on Capitol Construction. It's March 6, 2024, and we're going to open a public hearing on House Bill...
Can I do an introduction first? You just talked about the time.
Yep. We're going to have an introduction as to what we're going to be doing. If you think he's running the joint, you're right.
So, welcome, everyone. So Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee. Today, we have 13 bills on the agenda, so very full. Eight of the bills also have public hearings. Co-chairs have decided that we'll do all the public hearings first. Once the public hearings are done, we'll move on to the work sessions for each bill. All of the amendments discussed today, as well as the LFO recommendation memos, are posted on OLIS. When we start each public hearing, I will do a very brief introduction of the bill. When we get to the work sessions, the analysts staffing the bill will do a much more in-depth discussion of what's in the bill and the amendments. For public testimony today, we're going to have a timer set up.
It's two minutes per person.
We'll do two minutes per person because we've got limited time. I'll flip this laptop around, so if you're testifying in person, you'll have a timer counting down in front of you. If you're online, it should be on your screen. I think that's it.
And just for the record, I'm pretty tough with the gavel. I really don't want you going over two minutes. So, once the alarm hits two minutes, you'll hit her gavel. So, we're going to open up a public hearing on House Bill 4156A.
Thanks, Senator Gerard. So, House Bill 4156 is the measure modifies the crime of stalking and the crime of violating a court stalking protective order. And we have two people registered to testify.
Okay, we have May Lee Browning and Emily Hawley, please.
Thank you, Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey, members of the committee. My name is May Lee Browning. I represent the Oregon Criminal Defense Lawyers Association, and I am testifying in opposition to this bill. First, I would like to thank Representative Mannix for inviting the criminal defense lawyers to participate in a work group. And I'm just going to reiterate some of the points that we brought up in the work group. Number one, we really appreciate the A3 amendment because it restores the C felony. So, it was raised to a B felony, and now it's brought back down to a C felony, and there are some changes with the definitions. Our concern was that the definitions in this statute is really broad, and there was an elevation from the C felony to a B felony. So, we appreciate it coming back down. Some of the definitions are so broad that we worry that it would sweep up juveniles in this context. Because juvenile can be subject to a stalking order, specifically Sub-O, the use of electronic service, application, device, or other electronic means to obtain or monitor the location of the other person. We worry that it would capture unintentional acts. You know, right now, things are force-fed onto people's social media even when you don't want it. So, we were worried about it capturing youth. We appreciate Representative Mannix fixing one part of the bill that related to confidentiality of juvenile records. We do appreciate that, but we still have concerns about this bill, and thank you for letting me testify today.
Thank you. Okay, remotely, we have Emily Hawley, please.
Not online.
Person's not online.
All right. I'm going to, should I just close it then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 4156, and I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 1521A. Walt, would you take us through the diff, or what we're doing here?
Sure. So, very briefly, Co-Chair Gerard, so Senate Bill 1521 is an omnibus measure that makes changes to statutory provisions related to care for vulnerable individuals, and we have one person signed up to testify.
Okay. Well, we get our own Senator...
Mr. Chair, she told me she didn't, she was here in case we had questions, but she didn't actually need to testify.
Okay.
No, she, right. I'm just confirming what you told me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Chief, if we had questions.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify on Senate Bill 1521A? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1521A, and I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 1552A.
Chair, Co-Chair Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill 1552 is an omnibus measure that makes many changes to statutory provisions for kindergarten through grade 12 education and institutions of higher education. We have one person registered to testify.
Loretta Smith, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey, Speaker Ray Field, President Wagner, and the members of the Joint Committee on Ways and Means Subcommittee on Capitol Construction. My name is Loretta Smith, and I'm here speaking on behalf of REEP. It is a youth mentoring organization in Portland, Oregon, and they strongly support Senate Bill 1552, which proposes the establishment of a youth advisory group within the Oregon Department of Education. This bill outlines crucial steps to ensure youth voices are heard and valued in matters concerning education, policy, and decision-making. The provision of staff support and requirements for adult members to facilitate mentorship opportunities for youth members underscores the importance of creating a supportive environment for the youth advisory group to thrive. By emphasizing racial equity and justice considerations in its duties, the group will contribute to fostering a more inclusive and equitable educational system in Oregon. Furthermore, the mandate for youth advisory groups to meet regularly throughout the year ensures ongoing engagement and input from youth members on key education-related issues. The appropriation of general fund resources to support the operations of youth advisory, it really underscores the state's commitment to investing in the voices and perspectives of its young citizens and residents. In conclusion, the establishment of a youth advisory group through SB 1552 is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else that wishes to testify on Senate Bill 1552A?
I can answer.
Do you want to testify, Senator? Is this a yes or a no?
Why not?
Because we have floor at 10.
The panel says no. Senator Dembrough says yes.
This is not necessary, Senator.
Time Senator, bill's own bill.
Stop when you get to ask, Senator.
Take a zero off the top.
Thank you. I do want to remind you, there's a two minute. I know how you speak.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, dear colleague. I'm Michael Dembrough. I represent District 23, much of Northeast, Southeast Portland. I come to as chair of the Senate Committee on Education, from which this bill came. It's the session omnibus bill fixing a number of things that needed to be fixed as a result of issues that have arisen since the last session, as well as a few other timely issues that will prepare this body for the 2025 session, despite my absence. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, colleagues.
Any questions?
Just, no, no, I'm not going to ask any questions, especially with the one minute. We've got floor at 10.
Person, go ahead.
No, I do want to note, because, because in his wisdom, the Presiding Officer in the Senate didn't assign me to full Ways and Means. Anybody pick up on that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
We're ignoring it.
Yeah. The Senator Dembrough's worked really diligently for many, many years on keeping our education statutes comprehensible and moving the state forward on behalf of children at all levels and students, and I just want to say thank you, Michael, for the great work. You've really worked for six months and more on setting this up, and I'm really proud to be able to vote for this bill today.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else wish to testify? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1552A, and I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 1579A.
Senate Bill 1579A creates the Children's Advocacy Center Fund that is continuously appropriated to the Department of Justice to establish and maintain sufficient children's advocacy centers and regional children's advocacy centers. We have two people registered to testify, both senators.
Senator Knob, Senator Brock Smith, please.
Thank you, Co-Chairs, Presiding Officers, Members of the Committee, State Senator Tim Knob, Senate District 27. I have come today to be with you to testify on Senate Bill 1579, as I call it the most important bill of the session. Some people may disagree, but we are interested in the dash 15s and the dash 16s, I believe. And essentially, the bill helps fund child advocacy centers. It is currently the de facto policy of the state that if the fundraising efforts of the child advocacy centers go well, then children will get services. And if they don't, they struggle. And we have some that are out there and are struggling. So, one of the things that we wanted to do with this bill was to make sure that we make the temporary funding that we have been the last couple bienniums permanent. That's happening in another bill for the next biennium. And so, we focused this particular amendment on the funding for one-time grants to expand services to kids and to geographic areas that don't necessarily get funding, and also to services that don't currently exist or are underfunded, you know, mental health, behavioral health, those types of things. And so, we would encourage you to vote for this. The other thing this bill will do will be encourage people, the CACs that are not currently accredited, there's 12 out of 24 roughly, that aren't accredited. It would encourage them to get accredited by the way the money is spent, and 50% of the grants will go across the board, divided equally amongst the 24. And then, the 50%, in addition to that, you have to either be accredited as a CAC or be in essentially process or pending for accrediting in order to get the second part of the grant. And with that, I thank you for your time and attention to this bill, and I would encourage you, if you haven't signed on yet, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brock Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey. For your record, Senate, State Senator David Brock Smith, District 1, with Southwest Oregon. I'll be brief and just say that I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you and have this piece of legislation to move forward. Our child advocacy centers are critically important to this state, and the resources that are needed are even more so. I have a Wally's house in my district, as you've heard me talk about, and when I was a county commissioner, we had to move Wally's house out from underneath the county onto a standalone nonprofit because it was under the DA's office and severely underfunded due to county financial restraints. And so, the opportunity to actually invest in our child advocacy centers are critically important because, as you know, the work they do is also critically important in the most difficult time for those young youth. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify on Senate Bill 1579A? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1579A. Which one do you want to go through here?
Senate Bill 5702.
Okay. I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 5702.
All right. Co-Chair Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill 5702 is the Fee Ratification Bill that provides the enabling legislation necessary for fees adopted by multiple state agencies. We don't have anyone who pre-registered to testify for this bill.
Is there anyone out there that wishes to testify on Senate Bill 5702? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing, or the public hearing on Senate Bill 5702, 5203.
Yes, sir.
Going to open a public hearing on House Bill 5203.
Co-Chair Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, House Bill 5203 modifies the 2023-25 revenue allocations from the Administrative Services Economic Development Fund, Veterans Services Fund, Criminal Fines Account, Oregon Marijuana Account, and Fund for Student Success. We don't have anyone who pre-registered to testify on this bill.
Is there anyone that wishes to testify on House Bill 5203? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 5203, and I'm going to open up a public hearing on Senate Bill 5701.
Senator Gerard, or Co-Chair Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill 5701 relates to state financial administration, and it is the omnibus budget reconciliation measure for the 2024 session. We have seven people pre-registered to give public testimony.
Okay, I'm going to call Donovan Scribes and Sarah Closer, Clausar, maybe. Both of those are remote, so let's start off with Donovan Scribes, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey, members of the committee. My name is Donovan Scribes, and I am the co-founder and project director for The Kids Outside, our only effort to reimagine George Park. I'm urging you to pass a funding request for $750,000 to improve safety and access at George Park. By passing this with Senate Bill 5701, you promote a more equitable Oregon. George Park is within walking distance of four schools in the neighborhood, but despite being centrally located in an area with a lot of youth and families, this two-acre green, excuse me, this two-acre green space is severely in lack of infrastructure that would promote the positive usage of the space. Students at Roosevelt High School and George Middle School pass this park every single day on the way to and from school, but it has, and it has also been deemed a priority group through Portland Bureau of Transportation's Safe Routes to School Program. I am a fourth-generation Portlander. I'm not from the St. John's neighborhood, but I have been compelled to bring change to this community, which is one of the most unique places in the Pacific Northwest. I've documented research and combated the impacts of gentrification, and St. John's is gentrifying quickly. This effort, however, is a shining example of how community voice can guide a development from the ground up and be the force behind what change happens in a neighborhood. This is what empowered community change looks like. St. John's is one of the most diverse neighborhoods in Oregon. For five years, our community has been submitting input on what building a new future for this forgotten park can look like. It's been one of the most overlooked areas in the state. These investments will bring more life into St. John's and set the future for a more joyful and more connected North Portland for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scribes. Sarah Clausar, please. Michelle Glass, please.
Good morning. Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey, and members of the committee. My name is Michelle Glass, and I represent the Regional Health Equity Coalition that serves Jackson and Josephine Counties here in Southern Oregon. And I'm here this morning to ask that you ensure that the OHA budget request, which continues funding for the Regional Health Equity Coalition, or REC, budget allocation, is included in Senate Bill 5701. As you may or may not be familiar with us, we are autonomous, community-led coalitions that come together to identify the most pressing health equity issues in our regions and to create responsive policy and systems changes that address health inequities. To have the most impact for investment, these efforts focus on those who experience the highest health inequities due to systemic barriers. Currently, Oregon has nine recs across the state, and we serve 19 counties and the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. Making progress on health equity requires sustained effort and enough resources, but the funding for recs to support our work has stayed the same since 2014, even though, as I'm sure you can all appreciate, it cost a lot more to do this work in 2024 than it did a decade ago. And unfortunately, this is just not sustainable. Our OHA funding requests will help us to continue to meet urgent needs in our regions and in the long term to help the state lower health costs as we improve health equity across Oregon. This is why so many partners have signed on to support full funding of the REC program, including but not limited to the Oregon Nurses Association, the Coalition of Local Health Officials, Care Oregon, Columbia Pacific CCO, All Care Health, and the NAACP Lynn Benton Branch. We are also grateful that our request has the support of the Governor's Office. I hope that you will prioritize this opportunity to invest in our ongoing health equity work by ensuring that the OHA REC funding request is included in Senate Bill 5701. Thank you for your time and thank you for your service to the state of Oregon.
Thank you for your testimony. Mika Contreras, please.
Good morning, Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey. My name is Mika Contreras, and I am the Executive Director of the Lynn Benton Health Equity Alliance that serves Lynn and Benton Counties. I'm here today to respectfully request that you support and include the crucial Regional Health Equity Coalition program expansion request, which is an OHA budget request. The recs worked closely with OHA to develop this request, and it is supported by the Governor's Office. Regional Health Equity Coalitions are not just grassroots, community members coming together to form a coalition. They are the driving force behind identifying the most critical health equity issues that impact priority populations in their region. They create solutions to these barriers through policy and systems change, which are crucial to addressing them. Our efforts focus on the needs and lived experience of those most impacted by these health disparities due to systemic exclusion, as well as those lacking access to services and support. That way, we can work collaboratively across systems to ensure that processes, responses, and solutions are community-driven, reflective of actual circumstances, and are most effective at reducing disparities. Due to our makeup, we are inherently responsive, adaptable, and nimble. We have reach into communities that others do not, and we are an essential part of Oregon's healthcare infrastructure. We've responded to emergencies during the COVID-19 pandemic, responded to environmental disasters, and wildfire recovery. And as you heard earlier, the challenge we face is that our funding has remained stagnant since 2014. Everyone knows that the cost of doing business has significantly increased in the past 10 years, and in order for us to continue to be effective and viable, it is imperative that our funding levels be brought up to what is appropriate for current times. Without this, our ability to address health disparities and serve those most in need will be severely compromised. The Capitol Construction Subcommittee has the opportunity to support health equity by funding this budget request and ensuring its inclusion. Thank you for your consideration, time, and service.
Thank you. Antonio Huerta, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Hovey, and members of the Capitol Construction Subcommittee. My name is Antonio Huerta, and I'm here to ask for your support on SB 5701, an OHA budget request to continue support for the Regional Health Equity Coalition, or RHEC, budget allocation, which is supported by the Governor. I am representing the RHEC that serves Lynn and Douglas Counties. As regional health equity coalitions, we are autonomous, community-led coalitions that come together to identify what the most pressing health equity issues are for our communities and to create policy and system changes needed to address health inequities that affect the most vulnerable populations in Oregon. It has already been mentioned, currently, Oregon has nine RHECs across the state that serve 19 counties and the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. RHECs have responded to our community's call by advocating for legislative bills, including investments in driver's licenses for all, declaring racism as a public health crisis, Reproductive Health Equity Act, and Medicaid waiver renewal advocacy at the policy level. We also have responded to emergencies during COVID-19, environmental disaster, and wildfire recovery. We are building a bridge between our healthcare system and our communities by not only advocating for them, but also inviting them to be part of our efforts and solutions. They are important voice, they're important to voice their barriers in health equity initiatives, but we cannot diswork if we're not funded properly. We need funding to continue to expand our reach, our capacity building, and engage the community in health equity work to continue to address policies, systems, and circumstances that result in health inequities. The funding will help us continue to have resources and, in the long term, help our state lower healthcare costs. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Thank you for your testimony. Danita Harris, please.
Chair Hovey, Chair Gerard, and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Danita Harris. I use they/them pronouns, and I am the Deputy Director of Movement Building for Imagine Black, where we envision a world where people of African descent enjoy the rights, resources, and recognition to be a thriving, resilient, and connected community. It has been said once, it has been declared a million times, childcare is the work that makes all work possible. SB 5701 carries significant investments in early learning and care. Without this funding, families presently enrolled in the employment-related daycare program could have faced consequences, including steep increases in co-pays. Right now, there are over 1,900 families, not children, families, that are on the wait list to receive childcare in order for, in order to have caregivers available to go to work or to go to school, because childcare is the work that makes all work possible. Working-class families need your ongoing support. The waitlist clearly indicates that. This investment, coupled with the momentum garnered over the past few years, makes significant headway in addressing the childcare desert that exists in every county in our state. Thank you for this meaningful investment.
Thank you for your testimony. Going to go back and see if Sarah Clausar remotely is on the phone, or online, rather. Not seeing anything for Sarah Clausar. Deborah Murphy, one more time. Is there anybody else wish to give testimony on Senate Bill 5701?
Mr. Co-Chair, I've got a question. Is this appropriate time to ask it, or do I not ask questions on this?
I think we have a, does it concern your vote, or?
It concerns part of the bill.
Sure, go ahead.
On Section 95, appropriation that we gave earlier to, from the emergency board, it's reducing the State Forestry Department for fire protection expense, and it's decreasing it $6,521. I would just, I'd be curious as to... I would just be curious as to why.
It's being allocated somewhere else.
If I could... Yeah, I like an answer on the record, that's all I'm asking.
So, when we get, Senator Hansel, when we get to the work session on the bill, Tom McDonald will be in the chair and he'll hopefully be able to have an answer for you on that one.
Thank you.
One more time, anybody want to testify on Senate Bill 5701? I'm going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 5701, and I'm going to open a public hearing on Senate Bill 1501.
Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill 1501 implements statutory changes necessary to support the 2325 legislatively approved budget and clarifies the application of statutes. There's one person registered to testify on this bill. That next page.
Okay, Leann Knapp, please.
Co-Chairs Gerard and Holby, members of the committee, my name's Leann Knapp. My pronouns are she and her. I'm here representing Oregon Housing and Community Services in support of Senate Bill 1501. I recognize the committee has a little bit of time today, so I'll try to keep it brief. As you're likely aware, OHCS has been engaged in Oregon's emergency homelessness response effort since January 10th, 2023, when Governor Kotek declared a state of emergency around unsheltered homelessness. We've seen strong results from this work. In addition to the resources allocated in Senate Bill 5511 and House Bill 5019 last session to facilitate that work, the legislature also set aside $39 million in a special purpose appropriation in Senate Bill 5506 to provide local communities additional resources to rehouse more households above and beyond their original goals, to build on the successful work of rehousing across the state. To release those funds, OHCS was required to bring forward a framework for that effort. We did bring forward that framework, which was approved by the Interim Joint Committee on Ways and Means during January legislative days. In short, the framework proposed a statewide rehousing program that will provide needed services to move Oregonians experiencing homelessness into housing. That brings us to the small but important statutory change in Senate Bill 1501. If a local community were to begin providing a rehoused individual with one of the critical supports as a part of that program, up to 24 months of long-term rental assistance, that support would need to extend beyond the current biennium. The change in Senate Bill 1501 would simply make a small shift to the very narrow scope of the Long-Term Rental Assistance Fund, which is a pre-existing account within the agency to allow those rehousing dollars to be deposited and thus utilized beyond the biennium. OHCS would like to thank you for your ongoing partnership and commitment to our state's emergency response efforts and urge your support for Senate Bill 1501.
Thank you for your testimony. Anybody else wish to give testimony on Senate Bill 1501? Seeing that, and I'm going to close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1501, and we're going to open a work session on House Bill 4156A. If you could, please walk us through the bill.
Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, House Bill 4156 modifies the crime of stalking and the crime of violating a court stalking protective order. Under current law, these crimes are classified misdemeanors that increase to Class C felonies under certain circumstances. The measure expands the circumstances under which these crimes can be elevated to a felony charge and increases the penalty from a Class C felony to a Class B felony. The proposed -A3 Amendment returns the crime to a Class C felony. The fiscal impact of the measure is minimal in the 2325 and 2527 biennium for all impacted entities. However, the cost to the Department of Corrections increases to approximately $1 million general fund in future biennia. The Office of Economic Analysis Corrections Population Forecast would be used to make any necessary future budget modifications for the department. The amendment, staff measure summary, and fiscal impact are available on OLIS. Thank you.
Mr. Co-Chair, a motion, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the -A3 Amendment to House Bill 4156.
Colleagues, you've heard the motion to move the adoption of the -A3 Amendment to House Bill 4156. Is there any discussion? Could you please take the vote? Or just do an op?
We just do objections.
Okay. Is there any objections? Seeing that the amendment is adopted, Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill 4156A as amended by the -A3 Amendment to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you've heard the motion to move House Bill 4156A as amended with the -A3 Amendment to the full committee with the due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? House Bill 4156A passes to the full committee. The due pass recommendation, Carriers, please.
Manix to the full and to the House floor.
Manix to the full and House floor, Senate.
Probably Przyanski.
Przyanski. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the work session on House Bill 4156A, and I'm going to open a work session on Senate Bill 1521A.
Co-Chairs and members of the Subcommittee, for the record, Gregory Jolovet with the Legislative Fiscal Office. Senate Bill 1521 is a human services omnibus measure that makes changes to statutory provisions related to care for vulnerable individuals. It authorizes the Department of Human Services to contract with one or more organizations to provide enhanced services and supports to employers of personal support workers and requires at least one such contract be in place by July 1st of 2024. It requires DHS to adopt rules related to minimum qualifications for organizations endorsed to deliver agency with choice services, and requires DHS to contract with at least one such organization no later than January 1st of 2026. It prohibits agencies that employ direct support workers from engaging in certain practices, such as offering prizes or other forms of consideration to direct support staff or clients in exchange for an agreement to work with the agency. It directs the Oregon Health Authority to hire one additional position to investigate Medicaid fraud and take enforcement actions. It extends the exemption from automatic sprinklers in adult foster care homes to licenses issued prior to July 1st of 2026. It defines placement, safety, and crisis supports, and provides that DHS may only contract for placement, safety, and crisis supports if the services will be provided by a licensed child caring agency, except that certain child caring agencies may continue to provide these services through December 31st of 2024. The -A12 Amendment removes this final provision related to child welfare, and the Legislative Fiscal Office recommends adoption of the -A12 Amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the -A12 Amendment to Senate Bill 1521A.
Colleagues, you've heard the motion to move the adoption of the -A12 Amendment to Senate Bill 1521A. Is there discussion? Representative?
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. Just briefly, as I'm looking through the public testimony, I see that the Oregon Fire Marshals Association was opposed. Can I just have a very brief explanation as to why they shared their concern?
I actually can answer that question, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Go ahead, Senator Steiner.
Several years ago, we passed legislation requiring sprinklers in certain kinds of facilities, and because of the challenges of retrofitting some older buildings, other measures have been taken in the interim to help protect people living in those facilities. But if we were to enforce this provision without delaying it the way it does in this bill, many of these facilities would have to close down, and we're already short on places that are appropriate for caring for children. And so, it was necessary to protect children to delay the implementation of this provision. The state fire marshal is understandably concerned about fire safety, but on balance, this was considered the right step.
Any further?
It's always balancing act, as you know, Representative, so that's my understanding of that one, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Representative? Okay. So, we have an adoption of the -A12 Amendment to Senate Bill 1521. Is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition? The -A12 Amendment is adopted to Senate Bill 1521A. Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the... I move the... Oh. Why don't you describe it first?
Co-Chairs, members of the Subcommittee, the Legislative Fiscal Office additionally recommends the adoption of the -A14 Amendment, which adds funding to carry out the provisions of the bill. For DHS, it appropriates $87,435 general fund, it adjusts federal funds expenditure limitation by the same amount, and authorizes three positions and .75 FTE to implement agency with choice services. For the Oregon Health Authority, it appropriates $65,724 general fund and adjusts the federal funds expenditure limitation by the same amount, and authorizes one permanent position, .5 FTE, to investigate Medicaid program integrity and take any needed enforcement actions. LFO recommends adoption of the -A14 Amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the -A14 Amendment to Senate Bill 1521A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the -A14 Amendment to Senate Bill 1521A. Any discussion? Is there any opposition? So moved. Mr. Co-Chair. Or let's have LFO recommendation, I guess.
The Legislative Fiscal Office recommends that Senate Bill 1521, as amended by the -A12 and the -A14 Amendments, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move Senate Bill 1521A, as amended by the -A12 and the -A14 Amendments, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you've heard the motion to move Senate Bill 1521A, as amended with the -12 and the -A14 Amendments, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation. Any discussion? Is there any opposition? Seeing none, so moved. Carriers, please.
Senator Gelscher blew into full into the Senate floor, please, Mr. Chair.
Good.
And Representative Reynolds to the House, if that's okay with you guys.
All right. I'm going to close the hearing on Senate Bill 1521A, and I'm going to open the work session on Senate Bill 1552A. Welcome.
Good morning, Co-Chairs, Committee members. Before you is Senate Bill 1552A relating to education. This bill comes to you from the Senate Committee on Education, and it also received an informational hearing in the House Higher Education Committee on February 27th. There's quite a lot of material on OLIS about this bill, including the memo I'm working from today, fiscal analyses, and a staff measure summary. Senate Bill 1552 is an omnibus measure that makes many changes to statutory provisions for kindergarten through grade 12 education and for institutions of higher education. It adds new requirements to state agencies, corrects or repeals statutes affected by legislation in the 2023 session, and modifies definitions. It appropriates $300,000 of general fund to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission to contract out for a study of the forestry workforce. LFO recommends adoption of the -A3 Amendment, the first of two for this bill, which clarifies provisions and modifies operative dates for certain sections. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Mr. Co-Chair, a motion, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the -A3 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the -A3 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552A. Any discussion? Representative Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. Just very quickly, I'm looking under Section, I think it's Section 9. Can I just get a general definition of what does direct admissions mean?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. Representative Smith, I am not the policy expert on this bill. I'm going to ask for committee staff from LPRO to come up. Thank you.
And I'm just referring to a direct admissions program.
Co-Chair Gerard, Co-Chair Holby, and members of the committee, my name is Alma O'Brien. I'm staff from the Legislative Policy and Research Office of the House and Senate Education Committees. Representative Smith, the direct admissions refers to the practice of essentially informing students graduating high school which institutions of higher education they're eligible for admission for, or providing them a more direct pathway to admission. Either no, they do not have to apply, or there's a shortened application process for them.
Just a quick follow-up.
Sure. Go ahead, Representative.
Would this be after a student has taken their ACT or SAT? Or are those being waived in this process?
It depends on the admission standards established by the institution. So, usually the admission standards for GPA or SAT or ACT remain the same. It's just whether they meet those, there's kind of a prescreening process. Different states implement it differently.
So, just so I understand, so we're not reducing the criteria to get into a university or creating a program to share what they're eligible to get into?
That's not the intention, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any further discussion concerning the -A3 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552A? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the adoption of the -A3 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552? Seeing none, so moved. Please go on to the -A4 Amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. LFO additionally recommends adoption of the -A4 Amendment, which appropriates a total of $864,558 of general fund to the following agencies for the following purposes. It appropriates $198,739 of general fund to the Department of Education to establish two positions, .69 FTE, to implement and staff the youth advisory group. It appropriates $143,137 of general fund to the Oregon Health Authority to establish one position, .63 FTE, to begin implementation of pre-application determinations for professional licensure. It appropriates $158,865 of general fund to the Higher Education Coordinating Commission to establish one position, .5 FTE, to address the establishment of a direct admission program. This amount is in addition to the $300,000 that is appropriated in the base bill to HEC for contract services to conduct a forestry workforce study. Finally, it appropriates $368,3817 of general fund to the Legislative Policy and Research Office for one limited-duration position, .38 FTE, to oversee a contract with a research firm to study the quality education model and Oregon's system of financing K-12 education, and to provide research and staff support on these topics. With the -4 Amendment, the total cost of Senate Bill 1552 is $1,164,558 of general fund. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Co-Chair, a motion, please.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the -A4 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the -A4 Amendment to Senate Bill 1552. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Mr... Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. LFO recommends that Senate Bill 1552, as amended by the -A3 and the -A4 Amendments, be moved to the full committee.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move Senate Bill 1552A, as amended by the -A3 and the -A4 Amendment, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill 15... Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill 1552A as amended with the dash A-3 and the dash A-4 amendment to the full committee with the due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Bill passes. Carriers, please.
Senator Dembrow to full and the floor, please, Mr. Chair.
And Representative Neera to the House floor.
Okay. Got it? Good. I'm gonna close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1552A, or the work session, rather, and I'm gonna open a work session on Senate Bill 1579A. Please.
Good morning, Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee. Senate Bill 1579 is related to child abuse. The measure creates the Child Advocacy Center Fund that is continuously appropriated to the Department of Justice to establish and maintain sufficient children's advocacy centers and regional children's advocacy centers. The interest is retained by the fund. There are two amendments to the measure, one policy and one budget. The amendments are available on OLS along with a fiscal impact statement for the dash A-15. The dash A-15 amendment establishes the Children's Advocacy Center One-Time Grant Program and creates the Children's Advocacy Center One-Time Grant Fund, which is also continuously appropriated to the Department of Justice and retains interest earnings. The fund also allows for administrative expenses of the grant program to be charged to the fund. The dash A-15 amendment also includes a one-time general fund appropriation and the amount of $7 million for deposited in the Children's Advocacy Center One-Time Grant Fund. Monies in the fund are to be used for 50% for non-competitive grants and 50% for competitive grants awarded no later than June 30th, 2025.
Let's go with this. Mr. Co-Chair. The dash A-15.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move the adoption of the dash A-15 amendment to Senate Bill 1579A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to adopt the dash A-15 amendment to Senate Bill 1579A. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Please, on the.
Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, there is also a budgetary amendment, a dash A-16, available on OLS that establishes a corresponding other funds expenditure limitation, the amount of $7 million for the Children's Advocacy Center One-Time Grant Program, whose revenue source is the general fund appropriation contained in the dash A-15 amendment. The overall cost of the measure for the 2025-23-25 biennium is $7 million general fund, $7 million other funds, and one limited duration position for .63 FTE for the Department of Justice, along with associated services and supplies. The 2527 cost of the measure is estimated to be $75,942 other funds, one limited duration position, .25 FTE. The measure declares an emergency overall and effective on passage. The Children's Advocacy Center One-Time Grant Program and Children's Advocacy One-Time Grant Fund sunset on January 2nd, 2026. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash A-16 amendment to Senate Bill 1579A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash A-16 amendment to Senate Bill 1579A. Is there any discussion? Sure. Go ahead, Mr. President.
Just as a, with a spouse who serves on the Board of Clackamas Women's Services and direct family experience with a safe place, Family Justice Center in Clackamas County, I just want to thank Senator Knob for his relentless advocacy for this legislation. And I would just say it's maybe tied for the best bill of the legislative session, so.
That begs a question, but I'm not gonna go there.
Don't. Just don't go there. You had to say that, Mr. President. You had to say that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the?
Just very quickly.
On the adoption of the dash A-16 amendment? Go ahead. Representative Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I concur with our Senate President. I do have one critique, though, as we're looking at the appointment of members. It talks about one member who is a representative of a children's advocacy center located in central, eastern, or southern Oregon. It would have been my desire to have or change to and to have broader representation because the needs in eastern Oregon are very different from central or southern. But I really compliment where this legislation is going. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Representative Smith, would you like to take a pause on this bill and maybe work on some additional amendments before we move forward with this?
Are you willing?
No.
No.
That was a rhetorical question, Representative.
Enough to know, no. It's a great piece of legislation.
Good answer, Representative.
Okay. Boy, we're Canadians here today. Okay, so we have a motion to move the adoption of the dash A-16 amendments. Is there any opposition? Last chance, Representative Smith.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, the adoption, the dash A-16s are adopted. Mr., please, John, give us the rest of it here.
Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, LFO recommends that Senate Bill 1579, as amended by the dash A-15 and the dash A-16 amendments, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee. Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move Senate Bill 1579A, as amended by the dash A-15 and dash A-16 amendments, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill 1579A as amended with the dash A-15 and the A-16 amendment to the full committee on Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition?
Senator Knob to full and to the Senate floor, and I believe Representative Krup to the House floor.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna close the work session on Senate Bill 1579A, and I'm gonna open a work session on House Bill 4086A. Welcome. How you doing, Matt?
Co-Chairs Gerard and Co-Chairs Holby, members of Subcommittee, House Bill 4086 requires the Department of Human Services to commission two studies, one on the scope of child abuse investigations in Oregon and the other on a response to children exhibiting problematic sexual behavior. Both studies require a facilitator who specializes in public policy and require a preliminary report to be presented to the interim legislative committees by September 30th, 2024, and a final report by September 15th, 2025. DHS, or DHS is required to establish an advisory committee for each study to assist the facilitators in research and presentation. In the 2023-25 biennium, the estimated cost is $230,946 general fund, $77,640 federal funds. This covers most of the costs of the studies, all the costs of the studies, and reimbursable expenses of advisory committees. The A-5 amendment adds the funding to the bill. LFO recommends the adoption of the A-5 amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move the adoption of the dash A-5 amendment to House Bill 4086.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash A-5 amendment to House Bill 4086. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Go ahead, Matt.
LFO recommends that House Bill 4086A, as amended by the A-5 amendment, be moved to Ways and Means Committee, full committee.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move House Bill 4086A, as amended by the dash A-5 amendment, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move House Bill 4086A, as amended with the dash five amendment, to the full committee of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So, carriers, please.
I know it's a House, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We'll have Representative Valderrama to full committee and Representative Reynolds to the floor.
And Senator Compost to the Senate floor, please, Mr. Chair.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close the hearing on House Bill 4086, or the work session on House Bill 4086, and I'm gonna open a work session on House Bill 4092A.
Thank you, Co-Chairs, members of the Subcommittee. House Bill 4092 requires the completion of two studies. For the first of these, the measure directs the Oregon Health Authority to consult with counties and community health programs to determine the funding required for community health programs to provide services to those with behavioral health disorders. Following the initial study report deadlines outlined in the bill, the study must then be completed every following five years and results posted to OHA's website. OHA is to contract with the Oregon Council for Behavioral Health to convene a group of behavioral health partners to conduct the second study. The group is to review existing rules, contracts, and statutes related to behavioral health and make recommendations for applicable revisions. The recommended A-3 amendment replaces the blank general fund appropriation in Section 6 of the A and Gross Bill, adds appropriate, additional appropriation language addressing all of the costs of implementation. LFO recommends the adoption of the dash A-3 amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash A-3 amendment to House Bill 4092A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash A-3 amendment to House Bill 4092. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
LFO recommends that House Bill 4092, as amended by the dash A-3 amendment, be moved to the full Ways and Means Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill 4092A, as amended by the dash A-3 amendment, to the full committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move House Bill 4092A, as amended with the dash A-3 amendment, to the full Ways and Means Committee with a due pass recommendation. Any discussion? Any opposition? So adopted. Carriers?
We'll have Representative Valderrama to the full and Representative Nosa on the floor.
And Senator Patterson to the Senate, please.
Good. I'm gonna close the work session on House Bill 4092A, and I'm gonna open a work session on Senate, Senate Bill 1557A.
Thank you, Co-Chairs, members of the Subcommittee. 1557 requires the Oregon Health Authority to ensure that all children and youth who are eligible for medical assistance, including children who are in the custody of the Department of Human Services, who meet the criteria for institutional level of care, have access to the home and community-based services to which they are entitled under the Medicaid State Plan relating to the Community First Choice Option. OHA and DHS are directed to adopt rules to facilitate cross-agency coordination supporting multi-system-involved children and youth eligible for services and support funded under the Community First Choice Option. OHA, in collaboration with DHS, is directed to investigate the services and supports provided to children and youth to avoid placement in certain institutions that are funded through the Community First Choice Option. OHA is directed to report its findings from the investigations to the legislature. A preliminary report is due no later than October 1st, 2024. The final report is due no later than March 1st, 2025. The measure prohibits OHA, a community mental health program, a licensed medical provider, or other certified or licensed practitioner, an education provider, or a coordinated care organization from denying a child or youth access to mental health assessment, treatment, or services due to a co-occurring intellectual or developmental disability. OHA is directed to review and amend rules and contracts to ensure that children and youth have timely access to services under the Medicaid State Plan relating to the Community First Choice Option. The measure directs OHA and the Department of Education to develop strategies and recommendations to leverage federal Medicaid or children's health insurance program funds and to report to the legislature on the strategies and recommendations developed no later than October 1st, 2024. The recommended fiscal amendments provide budgetary authority for the Oregon Department of Health to contract a vendor for completion of the required reporting and to establish a limited duration position to review and revise administrative rules and coordinate with a contracted vendor. The Department of Administrative Services is provided, I'm sorry, this is the Department of Human Services. Typo. Department of Human Services is provided budgetary authority to establish two positions to perform cross-agency coordination, access existing children, child welfare program infrastructure, as well as design and implement program changes that do not require legislative or budgetary authority. LFO recommends the adoption of the A-7 amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash A-7 amendment to Senate Bill 1557A.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash A-7 amendment to Senate Bill 1557. Any discussion? Any opposition? Adopted.
LFO recommends that Senate Bill 1557, as amended by the dash A-7 amendment, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move Senate Bill 1557A, as amended by the dash A-7 amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with the due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill 1557A, as amended with the dash A-7 amendment, to the full committee on Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Any discussion? Any opposition? Adopted. Carriers?
Senator Gelscher blew into full and to the floor, please, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And Representative Gamble to the House floor.
Perfect. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing on Senate Bill 1557A, or the work session, rather, and I'm gonna open a work session on House Bill 5201. Go ahead, Mal, take us through this one, please.
Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, House Bill 5201 is the bond authorization bill. It amends the limits established during the 2023 legislative session for the maximum amount of bonds that state agencies may issue. Bond proceeds from the issuance, proceeds from the issuance of bonds are included as revenues and agency budgets. The dash two amendment replaces the bill and includes the following increases in general obligation and lottery revenue bonds authorized to be issued during the 23-25 biennium. 12.1 million of Article 11-Q bonds to finance one new and three ongoing projects for Oregon Youth Authority. 8.1 million of Article 11-Q and Article 11-F bonds to finance two public university capital projects. 15.2 million of additional Article 11-Q bonds for the Clackamas County Courthouse Replacement Project. 7 million of additional Article 11-Q bonds for the Benton County Courthouse Replacement Project. 5.1 million of Article 11-Q bonds for the Department of Emergency Management's statewide preparedness, incidence response equipment, or SPIRE, grant program. 37.2 million of lottery revenue bonds to support five projects. I'll also note that lottery revenue bond authority for two projects is repealed in this bill because we're shifting the funding for those projects to a general fund appropriation in Senate Bill 5701. Summary of general obligation and lottery bond-funded projects included in the dash two amendment is, is out on OLS. Bonds are scheduled to be sold in the spring of 2025, so no debt service payments are due in the 23-25 biennium. Debt service on additional bond funding is estimated to be 9.7 million general fund and 6.2 million lottery funds in the 23-27 biennium.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move the adoption of the dash eight, or the dash two amendment to House Bill 5201.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to adopt the dash two amendment to House Bill 5201. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Go ahead and.
Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, LFO recommends that House Bill 5201, as amended, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill 5201, as amended by the dash eight, by the dash two amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move House Bill 5201, as amended with the dash two amendment, to the full committee of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Any discussion? Any opposition? So adopted. Carriers, please.
Holby to the full and to the floor.
Do you want to take that, Mr. Chair?
I'm gonna close the work session on House Bill 5201, and I'm gonna open up a work session on House Bill 5202.
Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, House Bill 5202 is the budget bill for capital construction projects. The bill establishes authority for the acquisition of land and the planning, design, repair, and construction of projects with costs over $1 million. Projects are funded with bond, with bond proceeds authorized in House Bill 5201, as well as other revenue, as well as other revenues and federal grants received by agencies. The dash one amendment replaces the bill and establishes additional other funds capital construction, capital construction expenditure limitation of 25-
construction, capital construction expenditure limitation of twenty-five point five million and federal funds capital construction expenditure limitation of fifty-one point two million. New limitation approved for projects authorized in the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium totals fifteen point three million other funds and eighteen point four million federal funds. Increases projects authorized in the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium total nine point four million dollars other funds and thirty-two point eight million dollars federal funds. Finally, there is an eight hundred thousand dollar, there's eight hundred thousand dollars in additional other funds limitation approved for a project authorized in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty-one biennium. A list of six-year capital construction expenditure limitation projects approved in House Bill fifty-two oh two is available on OLIS. LFO recommends adoption of the dash one amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash one amendment to House Bill fifty-two oh two.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash one amendment to House Bill fifty-two oh two. Any discussion? Any objection? So adopted.
Senator Gerard, members of the Subcommittee, LFO recommends that House Bill fifty-two oh two, as amended, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill fifty-two oh two, as amended by the dash one amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move House Bill fifty-two oh two, as amended with the dash one amendment, to the full committee with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Carriers, please.
We'll have Representative Holby do that to the full and to the House floor.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you want that one, too?
You want that one, too?
No, you want that one, too.
Do I want this one?
Yes, you do.
I do.
I'll take the last, too.
Oh, good.
You can have this one. You're the chair of CapCon.
Oh, man. Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the work session on House Bill fifty-two oh two, and I'm going to open a work session on Senate Bill fifty-seven oh two. Yeah, good thing you didn't give me this one.
I wasn't going to give you that one. I'm taking it.
Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill fifty-seven oh two is the fee ratification bill for the Department of Public Safety Standards and Training, Higher Education Coordinating Commission, Department of Agriculture, Department of Environmental Quality, and the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. The measure provides the enabling legislation necessary to approve fee changes that were adopted by these agencies through, through the administrative rule process, and without this enabling legislation, these fees would be rescinded upon adjournment of this regular session. Most of these fees are result of programs established through prior legislation. Department of Agriculture established two new non-commercial pesticide applicator license fee types, as authorized by House Bill forty sixty-two from the two thousand and twenty-two session. DPSST established fees for private security entities authorized by House Bill twenty-five, twenty-seven from the two thousand and twenty-one session. DEQ established fees for two new programs, the Fuel Tank Seismic Stability Program authorized by Senate Bill fifteen sixty-seven, and the Mattress Stewardship Program from Senate Bill fifteen seventy-six. Both of those bills are from the two thousand and twenty-two session. OLLCC established an alcohol delivery training program review fee authorized by House Bill thirty-three oh eight in the two thousand and twenty-three session. Finally, HECC increased its fingerprint and background check fee for private career schools, last increase in two thousand and thirteen. And ODA adopted a late application fee for hemp growers. The Legislative Fiscal Office Work Session Memo and the Fiscal Impact Statement are on OLIS that provide more detail on these fees. We do have no amendments, so LFO recommends that Senate Bill fifty-seven oh two be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill fifty-two oh two.
Fifty-seven.
Or, excuse me, fifty-seven oh two to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill fifty-seven oh two to the full committee with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So we got Representative Helfrich, Representative Smith, and Co-Chair Gerard voting no. Motion passes. Carriers, please.
I'll take it, Mr. Chair, to full and to, I'm not cheering tonight, so I can take it to full and to the floor.
Okay, Steiner, House, please.
And we'll have Sanchez on the House floor.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on fifty-seven, the work session, I'm sorry, on Senate Bill fifty-seven oh two, and I'm going to open a work session on House Bill fifty-two oh three.
Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, House Bill fifty-two oh three is the revenue allocations bill for the two thousand and twenty-four session. Of the, the bill makes modifications to lottery revenue allocations from the Administrative Services Economic Development Fund and Veteran Services Fund, and also modifications for allocations from the criminal fine account, Oregon Marijuana Account, and Fund for Student Success. These allocations are within the resources that are forecasted in the March two thousand and twenty-four forecast, and the forecast for the current biennium for lottery resources is up by sixteen point two million dollars from the adopted budget, and the measure includes net lottery, net lottery fund allocations of thirteen point one million dollars, which account for adjustments to allocations for the state school fund, outdoor school fund, state employee compensation, and debt service adjustments across multiple agencies. The measure also increases CFA, or Criminal Fine Account allocations, by three point five million dollars for state employee compensation changes and pension obligation bond adjustments, and also decreases Oregon Marijuana Account allocations to the Drug Treatment and Recovery Services Fund by five point eight million dollars, which is consistent with the revenue forecast. And then finally, the measure adjusts the, the allocations to the Fund for Student Success to rebalance that to the March two thousand and twenty-four forecast and to use the balance of funds that are remaining in the statewide education initiatives account and early learning account from the twenty-one, twenty-three biennium. The dash two amendment to the, to the measure makes these allocation adjustments to the introduced bill.
Thank you. Mr. Co-Chair.
Mr. Co-Chair, I move the adoption of the dash two amendment to House Bill fifty-two oh three.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the dash two amendment to House Bill fifty-two oh three. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted.
And LFO recommends that House Bill fifty-two oh three, as amended by the dash two amendment, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move House Bill fifty-two oh three, as amended by the dash two amendment, to the full committee on Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move House Bill fifty-two oh three, as adopted with the dash two amendment, to the full Ways and Means Committee with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Carriers, please.
I'd like to have Representative Smith to the full and to the House floor.
Okay.
I can take it if you want, Mr. Chair. Or no, Hansel can take, Senator Hansel can take it.
Oh.
Thank you, Senator.
I always got a hope in Senator Frederick down there.
We'll get him for something else.
Oh, you will.
Senator Frederick's busy this session.
Sorry. We're going to close the Senate, or the work session on House Bill fifty-two oh three, and we're going to open a work session on Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one.
Mr. Co-Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one is a budget reconciliation bill for the two thousand and twenty-four session. The measure modifies state agencies' two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-five legislatively adopted budgets and adjusts general fund appropriations to the emergency board. On OLIS, you will find several documents that are related to this measure. One is a section-by-section summary of what each section, the actions taken in each section of the measure. There are five hundred and twenty-five sections that make budget adjustments. It's a, it's a good reference document. Also on OLIS is a summary of the emergency board balances. It's, it's an inclusive summary, so it includes all of the balances that are impacted by the measure, as well as those that are not or are impacted by other actions in the twenty-four session. A document that contains eleven budget notes that are proposed for the budget report for this measure is also on OLIS, and LFO's work session memo that includes a high-level summary of the adjustments that are made in the measure. And then the dash two amendment replaces the measure, the introduced version, to implement the twenty-three, twenty-five budget adjustments. And at a, at a high level, the adjustments that are made, they represent a series of omnibus budget reconciliation and rebalance adjustments that range from technical issues, items recommended for approval previously by the interim Joint Ways and Means Committee in November and January, forecasted changes to caseloads and revenue, debt service adjustments, and other one-time and ongoing program increases or other changes. Just to give you a few highlights, the measure makes adjustments to state agency budgets for employee compensation plan adjustments that are largely funded from four hundred and fifty million dollars in special purpose appropriations to the emergency board. It includes an eighty-six million dollar general fund increase for the employment-related daycare program, plus a related, an increase to a related special purpose appropriation from eight million to seventy-two million dollars. It includes support for two thousand and twenty-three fire season costs and two thousand and twenty-four pre-positioning readiness and cash flow issues for fire-related costs. This includes six point five million dollars released from a special purpose appropriation in section ninety-five of the bill. That, that pertains to the question asked earlier by Senator Hansel, so that, that funding is not re, not reduced. That's just disappropriated from the SPA and appropriated to the Department of Forestry.
Thank you.
It includes thirty-nine million dollars for one-time road maintenance needs and health and safety along ODOT rights of way.
You're welcome.
And there are many other adjustments, many one-time general fund adjustments for targeted purposes, such as for arts and cultural venues and, and so on. For the emergency board, the measure adjusts sixteen special purpose appropriations and establishes three new ones for a net reduction of five hundred and fifty point four million dollars in emergency board balances. The three new spas that are established include thirty-five million dollars for the construction of a new veterans home in Roseburg, ten million for child welfare temporary lodging prevention, and five million dollars for a disaster preparedness stockpile. Overall, the measure results in a net increase of four hundred and nine point three million dollars general fund and a total funds increase of two point six billion for the twenty-three, twenty-five biennium.
Mr. ...
Yeah, a couple, a couple extra things to go through.
We have, we have Florida to go to, so if you could wrap it up, it'd be good.
Sure. There's a lot in the measure that I just wanted to get on the record.
Just less hours of work.
There are two actions that are needed before a, the vote on the measure. One is a, a motion for eleven budget notes that, again, are posted on OLIS. I have, I'm not going to read them all through, that would take a very long time, but I do have prepared remarks to go through, highlights of each one. If you, if you've read them, then I will, I will not provide that overview. And then the second action is on the dash two amendment.
Okay. Mr. Co-Chair, would you move the budget notes, please?
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the budget notes for Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the budget notes for Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one. Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? So adopted. Mr. Co-Chair.
LFO recommends adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one. Any discussion? Any opposition? So adopted.
Mr. Co-Chair, LFO recommends adoption of Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one with a dash two amendment to the full Ways and Means Committee.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one, as amended by the dash two amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one, as amended, to the full Ways and Means Committee with a due pass recommendation. Is there any discussion? I would just like to thank everyone for the veterans home down in Roseburg. Any other discussions? Any opposition? So adopted. Carriers, please.
We'll have Sanchez on the House floor.
I'll take it, Mr. Chair.
And Senator Steiner on the Senate side.
We'll have Senator Frederick take it to full. He can take it to full. I'm already taking one to full today.
Okay. Senator Frederick.
You're welcome.
The voice for the pony.
I know, right?
Voice for the pony.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to close the work session on Senate Bill fifty-seven oh one, and we're going to bring it home with a work session on Senate Bill fifteen oh one. We're going to open that up.
Mr. Chairman of the Committee, Senate Bill fifteen oh one is a non-appropriation measure that makes necessary changes in statutes and session law to support the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-five legislatively approved budget, to clarify the application of statutes for the budget and modify provisions relating to use of funds. Specifically, specifically, the measure expands allowable uses of monies in the Long-Term Rental Assistance Fund, which you heard about earlier, establishes the private security entity account for the new DPSST program. Both of those two provisions were introduced version of the bill. As amended, the bill would also repeal a forty million dollar transfer from the Public Employees Benefit Board revolving fund to the general fund, and increases the transfer from the Public Employees Benefit Board revolving fund to the DAS Risk Insurance Fund by forty million dollars, and also changes the date of the transfer to May two thousand and twenty-four. It extends, it also extends the sunset on the TIDGATE program. Mr. Chair, LFO recommends adoption of the dash two amendment.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifteen oh one.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifteen oh one. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
I just wanted to note that following the work session on fifty-seven oh one, the, almost the entire audience in this...
Got up and left.
Got up and left, and I want to make sure that it is absolutely no reflection on Mr. Seibert. We have the utmost respect for him. In fact, when I first came to the legislature, he taught me how to bang a gavel into a work session. So I just want people to be real clear.
Oh, man. Okay, motion, please.
Have we adopted the dash two amendment yet?
I think...
Okay, I move Senate Bill fifteen oh one, as amended by the dash two amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. I move Senate Bill fifteen oh one, as adopted, or as amended with the dash two amendment.
We're adopting the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Co-Chair, did you?
Let me restate the motion, Mr. Chair.
You're following me up, Mr. Co-Chair. It's late today. This is what happens when the speaker interjects.
Always got to be, say something smart.
Lost track. Co-Chair Gerard, I move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifteen oh one.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move the adoption of the dash two amendment to Senate Bill fifteen oh one. Any discussion? Any objection? So adopted. Mr. Co-Chair.
Well, at LFO recommendation.
LFO recommends that Senate Bill fifteen oh one, as amended by the dash two amendment, be moved to the Ways and Means Full Committee.
Co-Chair Gerard, I move Senate Bill fifteen oh one, as amended by the dash two amendment, to the Ways and Means Full Committee with a due pass recommendation.
Colleagues, you heard the motion to move Senate Bill fifteen oh one, as amended with the dash two amendment, to the full committee on Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Any discussion? Any opposition? So adopted. Carriers?
I got this, Mr. Chair.
And Sanchez to the House floor.
All right. Colleagues, I think that pretty well does it. I'm going to close the work session on Senate Bill fifteen oh one, and I think, go ahead, Mr. President.
Really quickly, I know we're on the floor, I just wanted to say a couple words. This is my...
words. This is my last committee hearing, because I'm not, I am not on full. I just wanted to read a quick quote and say two thank yous. So one is, there is an economist named Thomas Sowell who wrote, "The first lesson of economics is scarcity. There is never enough of anything to satisfy all those who want it. The first lesson of politics is to disregard the first lesson of economics." None of, none of what we do happens without the professional staff from the Legislative Fiscal Office. There is no way we can run the Oregon State Legislature without the work that you do every single day. I'm not on full, I just wanted to not be remiss and just to thank Amanda and every single LFO. So I just wanted to get that on, on the record. And the second thing is, although my dad joked in Atlanta earlier, I get the opportunity to serve with all of you, there are four of you, well, three and likely another one, who aren't going to be back, and I'm not going to have a chance to say this. So to Co-Chair Holby, to Speaker Rayfield, to Senator Hansel, and to my colleague, can I say this politically, the next state treasurer.
As much as Rayfield.
You, he can't run again.
That's true.
Just to give it up. You're diligent, you're talented, you're passionate, you're hardworking, you approach the budget with thoroughness, with honesty and grit, and always looking out for the best interests of all Oregonians, and it's been an honor to serve with you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just joking around. I would like to also say that our job was to allocate, I think we had about $75 million and over $700 million worth of ass, so it was a, it was a tough go, but we got through it, and so I want to thank everybody, and so we are...